It is Tuesday, May tenth at three thirty-five P M. I am Travis Hoben, City Council Chair. With us here, we have George Handley, or Council members Handley McKay in the chamber. Online, we have Council member Fillmore. We also have Wayne Parker, our C A O. And uh, looks like that's all the council members. Looks like we've got council members Shipley and um, Ellsworth and Whipple are not with us. But they're all planning to join as far as we know. Okay. Members of the public can view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. I remind, remind participants to meet your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded and broadcast for all to hear. I'd like to open this up for an invitation if anybody would like to say our opening prayer for us. Step right up. Thanks, John.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to meet this day and to discuss the budget and to look deep into how the city operates and try to be transparent and discuss important issues. We're thankful for the council members and for their desire to serve and for the many hours that they sacrificed from their personal lives. Please bless us. This meeting can be productive and helpful for them and for members of the public that are watching. We say it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, approval of minutes. It is approved, it is proposed that we approve the following minutes, the May third, twenty twenty-two work meeting minutes. Are there any objections or requested changes? Seeing no objections or requested changes, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called upon by the council chair. All right, our first item of business is a presentation on supplemental budget requests. I'm Malia Daly, policy analyst. Like to welcome Mayor Kafusi.
Hello, everyone. Okay, awesome, we're working. Okay, so this is a, we're going to go over the supplemental requests of the various departments in the city for the upcoming fiscal year. And this will include also, we're going to go over the ones that are currently funded within the tentative budget, so we can review those specifically. Um, in your packets, there was a more detailed spreadsheet that's going to be more than what was, what is on this PowerPoint. But that's available on on base for the public and then also SharePoint for counselors. So just an overview of supplemental requests in total. So there were seventy-three. And they were put into three different categories, critical being the most important. Um, departments chose this category if they felt that they really needed this to continue their operations at the level of that um, is needed and expected. And then twenty-eight necessary and eleven aspirational. So in total, that requested funding for all three of those categories is three point nine million. Um, last fiscal year, um, eighty-three thousand supplemental requests were funded currently in the tentative budget. We're sitting at nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four funded requests. And then it has that breakdown of that money for those requests, if it's coming from general fund or other funds. And we'll be going over later, we have a presentation this afternoon about non-general funds and what those look like and the changes in those and what those are funding. But if you have questions during this presentation, of course, ask those. So this is, these are all of the funded requests as presented in the tentative budget. So as you can see here, um, on the spreadsheet, the greater spreadsheet that I mentioned earlier, they're going to be highlighted purple. And so I just kept them purple here just for continuity. Um, so you can easily find those. The department is on that left side. So Admin Services. These include, um, those three are actually for I S, I S Department. And then Development, Parks, Police and Public Works. Those are the departments that have funded requests currently. You can see also on the far right, there's an F T E impact of seven point five. And then there's, all of these are recurring except for one. So these are recurring requests that would then be within the budget next fiscal year as well. So and please interject if you have any questions as I'm going through this, I'm just gonna keep going. But critical requests, so these are the ones in that top category. And there's thirty-four of these out of the seventy-three, eight of them are funded. There's two potentially funded with carryovers in that larger spreadsheet. Those are highlighted, I believe, with an orange color. And then two of these requests are one-time thirty-two reoccurring. Requests by departments, you can see that breakdown there. Fire had the most critical requests at sixteen. Um, and none of those were funded in the current tentative budget. That's the greatest kind of discrepancy between the number of requests and those that were funded currently. So you can see there funded critical requests, that's going to make up the majority of the total supplemental coming out to six hundred and eighty-seven thousand out of the nine hundred and eighty-four, I believe, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand. That is the total. Um, this does include for the police, those are all related to the airport. And you'll see throughout this afternoon through our reports that a lot of increases are related to the airport and public works. Um, other public works projects. Um, next we have the necessary request, that's that second tier. There's twenty-eight of these, five are funded currently in the tentative budget. Three potentially could be funded with carryovers. Four of these are one-time twenty-four recurring, and that's something you see, you know, I think it's evident going through these numbers, that most of these supplementals are recurring requests. Not very many are one-time. Um, and there was something else I want to talk about here back on critical, and you'll see why I want to bring this up. But here in the critical, majority of these are being funded through the general fund. Where in the necessary funded requests, the majority of them are being funded through other funds. So that's just something to keep in mind. That also has to do with the departments that it's going through. Um, this has an F T E impact of four and Karen, um, will have a presentation on F T Es and where exactly those are going to, what they're being funded by and what those are for. All of these are recurring costs. Um, again, airport, but also has to do with a lot of public works, um, projects. And then aspirational requests, there was eleven of these. Um, none are funded currently in the tentative budget, two potentially funded with carryovers. And I just copied all of the aspirational requests here because there were none funded, but I just wanted to show you all of those. And again, more recurring than one time. And then there's that breakdown by departments as well. There's no F T E impact with the aspirational requests. So that's just kind of a breakdown of that. There's, um, like I said, on on base for the public and then also in packets for the counselors on SharePoint. There's a memo and then more detailed spreadsheets that you can look at. Um, but does anyone have any questions going through any of those or want to go back to a slide and talk about any of the funded requests? Or if you want to bring up any of the unfunded ones, we can also put up the spreadsheets on the screen and discuss those as well.
First of all, welcome to councilor, uh, Rachel Whipple, who just joined us. No questions from the council? Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation of all funds revenue forecast by John Magnus, interim council executive director.
Good afternoon, council. Bring up the spreadsheet. Click the all funds tab. So what we've been doing lately, our last couple budget cycles is we've been looking at the all funds. These are all revenue funds that come to the city regardless of how they get spent, either through enterprise fund, I S F, uh, general fund. These are every, these are all the dollars that would be coming in for F Y twenty-three. We back up to the actual expenditures of F Y twenty-four, uh, we use those as a comparison and bring them forward to look at, um, projecting it into the future, how close will finance be on hitting their numbers? How comfortable are we? And these are, if you get the budget book, you'll see that these are just lines on the all fun page. So the top one is sales tax. The one thing to note is because of COVID, um, uh, F Y, um, well, actually F Y twenty creates kind of a blip and everything because we held stuff flat, as flat as we could that year. So we get some really huge percentage difference, um, from actuals to proposed. And that is mainly due to, due to the COVID time, which throws a little bit of our math out, but we can still make a pretty good guess what's happening. So on sales tax, you'll see in F Y, uh, twenty-one, the actual is twenty-three million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, that was twenty percent over what we had budgeted. Uh, that was the by largest, um, of the time that we have, the time period we're looking at, that's largest, uh, increase between proposed and actuals, which throws the math out. But looking forward, um, we can see, if you look at the change of year over year, the column M says five point four-two. That's what we see year over year change in the actuals. So we can look at, um, what they're projecting, that twenty-eight million dollars, seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for sales tax. We can look at, uh, F Y twenty-one, we keep carrying that number across five point two times five point, five point four-two. And we find out that, um, they're going to be very close to that number. It's a very solid number. Um, the one thing that we're missing that we don't have, um, is the actuals for last year. Can you bring that PDF up? John Borget was kind enough to give that to me this morning. As you can see, we are on track to hit our numbers and be very for F Y twenty-two. Um, this is eight months in and not quite three quarters. You can see that the increase year over year is going to be fifteen point two, two-four percent over last year. Um, and the increase from this year, from last year to this year is four point five-three, which fits in our model of of what we look at year over year since twenty fourteen. So we're very comfortable that this tax, sales tax that they're projecting is going to be right in the ballpark, probably a little more. Um, but if you were to add any more to the sales tax, it becomes very questionable if we could reach it. We'd rather be under than over. If we overestimate, then we have to come back and make cuts. So the sales tax number is a very good number. I'm very confident that we will reach this number regardless of the economy next, next cycle. We pull back up the spreadsheet. Utility, this is the one, um, we've been watching year over year, we're trying to get them to correct. Um, if you'll notice, if you look at the actuals compared to what the proposed budgets are, the actuals, um, are always lower than the proposed budgets except for last year, and they're holding it pretty flat. Um, and the year-over-year change is four point two percent. Uh, if you carry that F Y twenty-one over for two years, we're looking at about a hundred and eighteen thousand, a hundred and eighteen million. Um, and they're projecting a hundred and seventeen million. So, uh, they've corrected it and feel very comfortable that they'll make it this year, and this won't be one of the negative ones that we've been looking at. Property tax is the next one down. Again, same thing, it's year-over-year, the change on it has been thirteen point four, five, nine percent. We're going to actually have a presentation on property tax, so we're not going to dive too deep into that one. Uh, again, there's a lot of things that go into property tax, why we can hit it or miss it if people don't pay their tax. Um, we lose out on the revenue. If they didn't pay last year, but they pay this year, then we get an increase in revenue. So there's some variables that go into it that are kind of unpredictable, but we can look at year-over-year change and feel comfortable that that this should be right where it is. And then we'll also have to see what the mill rate is from the county, which we will probably get the day you guys ratify the budget. Fees is a one that we are, I took another thing that we're going to take a deep dive in, not this today, but in next week, we're going to look at fees. There is an issue with fees. Um, they have increased it quite a bit. Can you scroll down, pull it up? So you'll notice they're going from nineteen million for F Y twenty-two to twenty-six million in F Y twenty-three. But if you look at the year-over-year change, it's only one point seven percent. And the last two years, um, it's actually been a decrease year over year, and they have, last year, F Y twenty-one, they missed it by eighteen percent. So we're going to drill down to that a little more, we'll do the fees, come back and discuss with you, try to figure out why they've missed it. Why they're going up to twenty-six million dollars. There has been a few fee increases, uh, and that may make up for it. So that one we'll, we'll drill down into. Chargebacks. This is another one that we, we've been watching. Um, they're holding, they've actually dropped it this year from seventeen down to fifteen. I'm pretty comfortable. We do the math, it's going to be right, right around that number, maybe, it may come in a little low. Um, last year they were up by twenty-nine percent. Um, but if we look at the rate of change.
Can you remind me what a chargeback is?
Chargeback fees are what we charge for everybody for electric. Is it all the utilities? Yeah, it's the, it's the chargebacks we charge, uh, different departments for, uh, the facilities, there's cars. Yeah, it's the kind of an internal service fund. So these chargebacks, um, it does affect us, but that's something we'll keep, keep watch on. The rap tax, uh, very comfortable rap tax, I think, you know, it's seven percent, seven point two percent growth year over year. It's same thing, we do the math, we feel comfortable that they're going to come within it. Their proposed budget to the actuals, they have never missed it except back in nineteen and was a very small miss. So we feel comfortable they'll make it. Let's scroll down. Franchise fees. This one, there's been a one point two, one point two percent change over year over year. Um, they've been a little more aggressive on this, they're going to eleven million, which is a pretty big step. It's something that we will have to watch during the year, but again, um, they missed it two years in a row, but they missed it with less than ten percent, or one, was that one tenth to one percent? So, um, it's not that, not a very big deal, um, because of the, the totality of everything, when you look at the bottom lines is that the, the funds do balance out. So, uh, if we miss one, we make up on another one. The telecom, telecom, um, they've been, they've held that flat for three years, they're going to increase it to two hundred and two, by quarter million dollars. Uh, if we take the growth year over year.
Did you mean to skip grants?
Oh, Grant, sorry. Grants is an interesting one. Grants are kind of an unknown. This stuff, the, these are things that we're going to apply for. Um, you'll notice it's a big jump, it's a forty percent, forty-seven percent increase from last year. These will be grants like FAA grants that go to the airport. Any grants we get for the sewer treatment plant, any grants we get for the water treatment plant. So these are unknown. What happens if we miss the grants? Uh, those projects don't get built. So it does not affect our bottom line, it just gets, it gets removed from the, the final equation next year. So it's not that important. Um, it's important because we want the projects built, but it's not that important that if they miss the number. The telecom, they like I said, they've held flat, quarter million dollar increase. It's a little over half percent increase year over year. Uh, we did the math, it's going to be right there, they're right on the number. B and C roads. Um, they've held it flat for three years, uh, no increase, it's a four percent increase year over year, or four point seven. Um, it was, they had three point seven one last year, our twenty-one actuals over proposed. So if we do the math and carry it out, uh, we should actually bring more money than they're, they're proposing. It's their decision to hold it flat, so we're not going to question it. As far as them making budget, we're very confident they'll reach their goal of four hundred, four million dollars on the B and C.
Can you tell me what B and C stands for?
It's the road tax, there's three portions, A, B and C, and we get B and C. Fines is another one that's very hard. Um, because of COVID, uh, those numbers are all over the place. Because we didn't get into courts, courts were closed, we didn't get the fines for, um, code enforcement. So making a prediction, six hundred thousand dollars in fines is probably as good as guess as any. And again, um, if we miss in one department, we make it up in other lines. Miscellaneous, um, this is the, this is the bizarre one, we get these weird fees, we'll get something back like a workman's comp, chargeback, we'll get money back from workman's comp. We don't know where to put it. So it goes in the miscellaneous, we have a bunch of miscellaneous lines, uh, that come in. And this year, they're looking at a seven million dollars miscellaneous. Um, if you look at actuals for twenty-one, it was twenty-two million dollars. I don't understand this voodoo, so I leave it to, uh, John and his group, uh, if this is what they say it is. They have pretty much made it, uh, their budget, so, um, I'm comfortable with it. I'll let them figure out what early means. We go down to other, this is another one that's kind of an odd one they have. But again, if you look at it, the last two years, they have made. Oh, that math is wrong in there. They actually have made their budget. So again, we look at it. We feel comfortable, you know, if this is what they're saying, this is what we're going to get. Licensing fees, again, COVID had an effect on this. We lost some revenue in it. Quite a bit of revenue, if you look at going from nineteen to FY nineteen to FY twenty, it was a twenty two percent decrease in that revenue line. We did get an increase in twenty one and went back four point, four point eight percent. They're holding it flat again at five hundred thousand. Feel comfortable that they'll make the number because it's not that big of an increase. And if you were to try to fix and smooth some of that math for COVID, I feel comfortable that we'll make those lines. Principal and interest, this is, this is the investments off our money that we're holding into different bank accounts. This was pretty straightforward. They know how much we have, we know the interest rate. So this is how it comes out. Land sales, we always program a zero. We don't know what we're going to sell this year. So whatever gets sold will be added into the budget at the end of the year. It's just something that happens. Transfers, these are mostly our utility transfers. They, they have it decreasing, it decreased from twenty to twenty one. They have it decreasing from FY twenty two to twenty three. If they feel comfortable that, looking at the math, the, the rate of increase over time, we shouldn't have a problem making that number at all. They probably will be above that number a little bit.
Can we go back up to bonds too?
Sure. Bonds, these are the bonds that we go out with. They put zero in for this year. We only sold ten thousand dollars of the bonds in FY twenty one. But they put thirty five million. Again, this is, if we don't sell the bonds with the bonds, the project that they're for, we don't do. So it doesn't hit our bottom line. It's not like it's going to hurt, affect our ability to maintain our police fire, other stuff. It's our ability to build capital improvement projects using our, our power to issue bonds.
And with the bonds, this is our debt.
Bonds will translate into debt. So if you scroll down so I can see both totals. So we look at totals with bonds and totals without bonds. I like the total without bonds just because it's a little easier on the math side. Our all funds, all funds went down one point three, two percent from FY twenty to FY twenty one. Usually we, we have growth, but growth is almost five percent a year. If you look at over time, they are growing. They are going to go for up to three, three hundred and forty nine million, nine hundred and twenty nine thousand. If we look at that, we do the math on it, it is in our range of error. So we feel comfortable that they're going to make, that this is a balanced budget, regardless if we hit some numbers and don't hit some numbers. We've always done a pretty good job. And we've, if we don't hit it, then like I said, if it's bonds, if it's in our government grants, we miss those numbers, the projects just don't get built and doesn't affect the other services we deliver. Can you flip over to the general, general fund tab? As part of this, we also look at the general fund, what's coming into the general fund, and this is where most of our services, police, fire, governmental services are funded out of this one. So we pay, we pay very close attention to this one more than we do the other one, because it doesn't have some of that variable stuff in it. Again, sales tax, very comfortable with sales tax. I think they've hit a right number. I think we'll be a little over, but not much. Again, if you were to push it, ask them to push it higher, I would be afraid if there was a recession, we wouldn't make that number. Here, I'm comfortable that if there is a recession, we could still make this number. Franchise fees, again, that number is very sound. They missed it a little bit last year. And I still think that's this tangle from COVID fees or the COVID. That time during COVID, our math is, our math is a little fuzzy, but they didn't miss it, but not by much. Fees, again, this one they have, we have, you'll notice that they're for, we have what, one, two, three, four years of negative growth. And they've controlled for that. They didn't grow it last much. Last year, they didn't grow it that much for FY twenty two, only six point one nine percent. They're growing it to twelve million this year, which is seven point nine. It's a little bit out of the year over year, year over year is only three. We'll have to watch that. For, but like I said, we are going to dive into fees pretty hard next week and try to dig out why they think they can go to twelve million dollars. There are fee increases in the fee schedule, and my bet is when we dig into it, that's where they're making up the, making up this money.
So fees were increased or are going to be increased? Have they been increased yet or are they going?
No, it won't be increased until we pass the budget, and that part of the budget document will have our fee schedule.
Okay.
So what I'm betting is that is what's going to make up that up to twelve million dollars is that fee, fee increases. Like I said, we're going to dive, dive deep into that next week. Property tax, this is a weird one. Again, the state, by state law, what happens is a property values increase, our mill rate goes down. They're trying to hold us flat. Our only increase is if we have new development, new house or commercial gets developed. They get added in to our totals and we pick up the tax on that. Otherwise, the mill rate falls and they try to hold us flat, which is problematic, which we'll discuss when we do the property tax discussion today. But their numbers for it are very good. Again, the rap tax is a very good number. They're within our, our error, what we consider an error rate. One point nine million dollars is a very viable number for us. The B and C roads, again, they've held it flat for three years. Rate of growth has been on average five percent. So and if you look at FY twenty one, it was four point one million. So it should be able to carry that four, four million dollars with no problems. It should be over that eventually, or should be when we get the final numbers for FY twenty two.
Now, the A, B and C roads tax comes from gas, correct?
Yes. License. This is, this is the one that we had problems, and it's more COVID related than anything. Businesses shut, they don't get business license. We haven't adjusted the business, we haven't adjusted the fees on licenses in a while. So we have seen a decrease during the COVID period, but we did see an increase last year. We did make budget last year. There were one point five percent over actual over budget, proposed budget. So they've held it flat for two years now. I'm confident that they're going to make that, that number, that five hundred thousand based on the math going forward. Again, grants is another one. If we don't get the grants, the project doesn't happen. So I'm not too worried about it. It's, you know, part of that, part of that is, you know, we had CARES Act, we'll have ARPA money this year, those will be put into the grant system. So we'll be feeding money in from those two sources. Fines, again, if you look at, we only have three years of data on fines, it's really not enough to look at it to get a broader picture of it, but we have missed for the last two years on our budget. Last year, we missed it by forty, or FY twenty one, we missed it by forty four percent. Again, that has to do with COVID, the courts being closed, can't get code enforcement, can't get our fines. As the courts open up, we're expecting that that will pick up. They've held it flat for a second year of six hundred thousand after they decreased it. So we'll watch that, we're hoping. If we do the math, six hundred thousand is right there. That is, that is our number. Again, this is miscellaneous, the weird things that we don't know where to put. It's their voodoo. That's, they're saying it's ninety one thousand, it's ninety one thousand. And they, they have not missed their number, so I'm not worried about it. Other taxes. Again, this is, I have to ask Kelsey what those were, because I called her before meeting. They did miss it last year, not by a lot. It was eight hundred and ten, or FY twenty one, it was eight hundred and ten. We brought in four hundred and, seven hundred and forty three thousand. It wasn't a big miss. It's not a lot of money. For FY twenty one, they dropped it down to three hundred and eighty thousand, which is a huge drop, but they brought it back up to eight oh eight. If we look at the adjusted budget for FY twenty two, that three eighty has been adjusted higher. Again, this is their math. If they say that's what it's going to be, I accept it for what it is. And then looking at it through history, they've done a good job of predicting what it's going to be. Their, their proposed budgets are always under their actuals, except for that one year. Land sales, again, we put nothing in because we don't know what we're going to surplus. We don't know how much it's worth. It comes in, it's just a bonus. And then transfers in. You'll notice it transfers in. In FY twenty one, it was thirteen million, four hundred and forty two thousand, and they're projecting for this year thirteen million, nine hundred and forty two thousand. Very small increases over time. It's been four percent, but it has been, has been decreasing. We do, we do see it in the budget book that there are some departments where the transfers are getting smaller. So this is an acceptable number for us. So in the, the total, if you look at FY twenty one, it was seventy six million, two hundred and seventy four thousand. Our projected budget was sixty seven million, five hundred and eighty five thousand. There was eleven percent difference. Growth in the total, the general fund year over year is about five percent. If you do the math, that eighty one thousand, it's going to be a close number, but like I said, they've always done very well. They have not come, they have not missed that budget proposed over actual. So we feel comfortable, confident in what they have put for us today. If there's any of the budget lines that you want us to dive into deeper, so you can understand them, we're more than willing to. This is just a high level view of what the budget looks like. And sorry, it's a spreadsheet. It does not fit in a PowerPoint.
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Okay. We're really missing Shipley here. Sure you would have lots of questions.
Yeah, I'm still absorbing everything. Like I've read through it and I'm listening to it. Questions I think will come later.
All right. Next item, oh, supposed to have a break, but I think we power through here, folks. Let's keep going for a while.
As Rachel said, I think that's an important point. I think it's important the public knows that we've, we're reading through everything, and we're also asking questions behind the scenes of different people, and we are we're reading even more information than you see being shown to us in these meetings.
All right, Karen Tapahay, Community Relations Coordinator is going to give us a presentation regarding full-time equivalent gains and losses.
Hey, so the first list I'm going to show you are, is, it lists all the general fund FTEs. There we go. So in the general fund, the overall change is an additional four point nine FTEs. And we'll walk through each of those departments and divisions. So with Parks and Recreation, they went up two point six. They did transfer we debatement, part-time positions from Parks and Recreation over to Fire, that's nested under their Wildland Urban Interface efforts. And that took away point nine. And then with an increase of part-time and seasonal hours based on revenue projections for the cemetery and the rec center adds three point oh two. And additional seasonal hours for the Miss Provo float management, which apparently should have been added in a couple of years ago. That one adds point four eight. So we have an even addition to three point five minus the point nine gives you two point six. Then in the police department, they have an addition of two. Their supplemental request was approved for two airport security officers. One is an airport sergeant, the other an officer, and this includes their vehicle and equipment to be stationed there at the airport.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm figuring that right now they're already using some of the police force at the airport. So I'm assuming that having the dedicated, they're not going to use the other officers at the airport anymore. Is that true?
I believe so. I know that right now they just go over there when they know flights are coming in. Same with the fire department, they schedule based on incoming and outgoing flights. But that will change with, definitely with more flights, that increased service. They will need to be there more often, so you might as well.
Yeah, so those, these permanent positions will negate that, where we'll indirectly get the officers more in other positions.
Have you heard anything different, John?
Yeah, those two FTEs will be dedicated solely for the airport and right, and will free up the officers who have to go out there currently.
To do other things.
Right. But when those two FTEs are not there, then we'll have to backfill with the police like we currently do.
Because they, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We're, we're freeing up resources for the rest of the city.
Okay.
Yeah, if we start flying twenty four seven, we're probably going to have to rethink the scheduling, but right now, yeah, this'll, this'll free up the ones who are having to dash across to, to hit the, the flight times.
Are we going to have, will they still be, will they have offices and everything at the airport? Are they still going to be working out of City Hall?
No, they, they have an actual office there at the airport. I'm sure they could give you a tour if you swore yourself to secrecy. It's in this special area that we don't go to. So then a fire department, as I mentioned, the we debatement employees, so that added the point nine to theirs. Community and Neighborhood Services, this was, this, this is a fun one to follow along with. Overall, it's a reduction of one point seven five FTEs. So the code compliance officer position was only budgeted for twenty five percent. Last year, this upcoming year, it'll increase to a full one hundred percent. And then with, with merging Community and Neighborhood Services and Development Services kind of back together, you get a management analyst position that was moved over to Development Services, but it, but it, rather than being a management analyst, they are an office specialist. You had a question?
I have another question. Okay, this is one that I noticed in looking at the, the big budget. I'm just concerned about the code. It seems like we're going down in code enforcement people, and I believe the council last year made a point of adding more people to the council, to code enforcement. And that's still, you know, an issue for the city. So it concerns me that it looks like we're losing code enforcement people.
We're not losing, we're not losing in code enforcement. How come it was a quarter is how we staggered the hiring of the position. We didn't bring, we didn't fund that position until January first of twenty twenty two. So it counts on our books as a point two five.
Okay, so we are not going down in the number of code enforcement.
So it looks like one replaced the full, the CNS director position was removed.
Just re-managing like.
So it looks like that FT was slid over into.
So if, if, if I would have rewritten this, I probably would have juggled it a little bit to simplify it, but I know it's really important to, to make sure this reads probably exactly as the decisions were made. So code compliance position removed as part of the merger. But then when they removed the Director of Community and Neighborhood Services, then they added back that code compliance FTE.
Okay, so we're just losing that.
Place. Yeah.
That part time. I see, I can see it. I can see it.
This, yeah, this is the most complicated one. And then a part-time office specialist position was removed. So overall, losing employees, but part of that is, is merging a lot of the functions back in, not everything. Okay, then on information systems, cybersecurity position that originally was in finance has been moved to information systems. And then their supplemental request was approved to restore their help desk position. It was cut in the FY twenty one budget and then remained out in twenty two, and now it's back. And so that makes a difference of an additional one point five FTEs. Development service.
I do have a question about that, information systems. So I remember one of the main issues that information systems was having was that they did not have the manpower to do updates and patches, right? They're extremely behind in that, and they admitted that. So I'm wondering, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I'd like to know the answer, if this one point five difference is going to enable them to be up to date on patches. Oh, John knows.
Mr. Borget.
So it doesn't address that. What's happening here is our cybersecurity analyst, who is currently housed in finance, reports directly to me, so that he's independent from the IS division. But for synergy and works in the new building, he is going to be housed in the IS division, and there's a separate function called cybersecurity that he'll be in in IS, but still report to me. So that's, so that's what that. So that's. So that's what that one change is. And then the other is just the the we have been short half a position for in our help desk, a part time position. And in this budget, we've added it back and the plan is, and we'll be working through all the details with you on it. But the plan is to utilize ARPA funding because that was eliminated through the pandemic for that part time position. So.
Oh, so this, you're saying one of the ones here is contingent on ARPA?
The half.
The half.
Yep.
Okay, and then so this is for sure not going to help us get to the covering the patches.
Nope, all it is is moving Tyler and our office into the IS Division under cybersecurity.
Okay, thank you.
But it will help with the overall workload right now that we've got some trained technical and high skill people handling help desk positions where this part time position would be able to do that and let them focus on what they do best as far as utilizing their skills.
So again, it'll indirectly free up.
It will. That that portion will help. That's the only portion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the other positions are listed in the supplemental that show that they weren't funded. But it'll give you an idea of what they were looking for originally. Then developmental service or development services, full time office specialist that came over from Community and Neighborhood Services. So that's the only change for them. And yes, it's a very short graph because the department only existed as of a few years ago. Legal, so they had a grant paid employee that had been counted as a full time employee. And now it has been corrected to the appropriate amount. Mayor's Office Corrected Hours for Part Time Media Services Position. Media Services often being referred to as Channel Seventeen, but it encompasses quite a bit more than just Channel Seventeen. So that's point three there. Then Finance, as we mentioned, just moving that cybersecurity position from Finance to Information Systems. So minus one for them. Here are the non general fund FTEs. Obviously, this is the the more dramatic one. You've got eighteen point one FTEs added with the airport being the biggest chunk of them. So with the library, they adjusted their hours to reflect actual hours. That brought them down point six. With Water and and three other Public Works Departments, you'll see or Public Works Divisions. You'll see that they're sharing the load of bringing what is now an intern who works part time up to a full time public relations position. They're just sharing that point one in each division. So that's also on here. And supplemental request for a part time office assistant, a part time wastewater collections operator and part time pre treatment inspector position. Those are all half. Sanitation, the PR position as well. And then a supplemental request that was approved for a new sanitation worker because of increased demand and increased lines of service. They believe some cost will be offset by reducing the contract employee budget. And then again, in storm water, the the PR position. Vehicle maintenance, their supplemental supplemental request was approved for adding a new automotive technician. And then they had a contract position added to the budget, which is point seven. So an addition of one point seven. Parks and Recreation, it combines several areas here for for some simplicity. So the golf course and the ice sheet and Covey Center all have adjustments based on their projections for revenue. And these increases in additional hours for those employees will be offset by that revenue that does come in. So three point one for golf, two point eight for peaks and one point three for the Covey Center. Emergency Response, this is our dispatch and this just adjusts the hours for the reserved dispatchers to reflect actuals. So it goes down point five. Customer Service, another adjustment to reflect actual hours. It goes up point one. Airport. So there were positions added based on the FAA requirements and these do have to be separate people. I I know that question came up at a previous meeting. Division Director Airport Maintenance Manager Airport Operations Specialist, which is already added in. Oh, there's three of them that that have to be added in for that. Document Manager Airport Security Manager and then a half position for an Airport Wildlife Biologist. And then there is a position previously funded by grants that was added back into the budget. And then they removed the Airport Operations Coordinator Position. So a total of an additional seven and a half. That's the big one. And that's, oh, and that was my grand finale. Any questions? And after all the announcements at the airport, you can imagine how busy each and every one of these people will be.
All right. Next, we have a presentation regarding property tax by John Magnus, interim council executive director. And I'm just going to keep going unless I hear others say they want to take a break. So give me that look. If you need a break. Who's the Dave online? Is that Dave Shipley? All right, Councilmember Dave Shipley has joined us online. Welcome, Dave.
Okay, so we're going to look at Provo City's property tax and how that revenue affects us. This was supposed to be a two part. We're supposed to have fees backed into this. Then I can explain property tax and fees and what it means to the city as a whole. So next week, when we do fees, I'll do the relationship a little more so we understand why these two components are very important to us and making sure that they are where they need to be. So what happens is as property values increase in Provo, the mill rate decreases. That's just how the law is written. The only gain we get is if there's new development or new housing or commercial areas built. Whatever that value is added from that one, we'll get the mill rate on it. And that's how our property tax can actually move up is by increased building. So we have three streams. There's the general oblique, general operations, which is basically the general fund portion of the property tax. Bond Obligations, this is how we pay for our bonds and Library has a mill rate to built into the system. So the green bar is the overall tax rate. That is with all three strings built in. And you can see how it's been decreasing over time. Twenty eleven is on the left, twenty twenty one is on the right. You see that peak? That peak is created by passing of the bonds for the new city center, Public Safety Building. And it's also reflected in the orange line because the orange line is our bond line. The blue line is our general fund line. You can see over time from twenty eleven to twenty twenty one, it has dropped considerably as of the mill rate. Over this time period, the mill rate has decreased by thirty four percent. For the library, that decreases thirty five percent. So every year.
John, if I'm reading that correctly, are we currently? I'm looking at the bond obligations tax rate. We're currently where we were in two thousand and eleven or close?
Close to because we 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 passed the bonds for the new city hall. So we spiked up.
And what happened in two thousand and eleven, twelve? Is that the rec center or what is that?
I do not know. I haven't didn't look back that far. I just use it for a so I can model it out over time. But I can look into it and see why we had a speaking spike in two thousand and twelve. There's probably.
So and also just making sure I'm reading this correctly, the total tax rate. The total tax rate, even when we spiked, was lower than the tax total tax rate in two thousand and eleven.
Total tax rate for twenty eighteen, which is the highest, was five point eight nine.
Yeah.
Actually, that's right.
That's pretty interesting.
It was point zero zero two five six was the total tax rate. And that was the highest it climbed. But every year, it's this kind of inverse relationship as I could actually show it to you. So here's property tax values over that same period of time. You can see how property tax has been climbing and our mill rate falls. The county is it keeps our tax rate pretty flat as far as actual dollars goes. The only variance is if someone doesn't pay their taxes and pays the next year, we get, you know, the one year is a decrease, next year is an increase. So that is the goal of how the property tax works.
But we control the rate, not the county.
We can increase our rates by truth and taxation.
Yes, but we control increasing it. They do not, right?
They decrease it every year for us.
How does that work?
Because they hold the they hold the revenue that we get for a property tax, they're trying to hold it flat. So to keep it flat, they as the property values increase, they have to drop the mill rates.
So in theory, well, not in theory, but in practice, we're losing money.
Oh, we're always losing, but.
Right. And but we're not losing money because it's staying flat. We get a little money because of new development. But right, if you look at the dollars for.
But it's not staying. It's not competing with inflation. So.
Yeah, if you look at the dollars in two thousand and eleven to the dollars in two thousand and twenty one, it was a twenty nine percent depreciation value if you're using Western Western Consumer Price Index. That's what we use to build this model. We took the Consumer Price Index for those years. And then in real dollars, it's twenty nine percent. So we lose.
Sorry, say that again. Twenty nine percent since two thousand and eleven?
Yes. So a dollar today is worth the dollar twenty nine. So it's it's through inflation.
Okay, I still need to understand one thing real quick because I believe so we do control what property taxes are, the council does, right?
We can increase them.
We can increase them. I'll understand because I thought the county just collected them. I didn't understand that they had any control in the actual amounts.
It's like Mr. Parker has his hand up.
Yeah, I need that explained to me, please.
Sure. Thank you. So so the county does play a role in that they are required, the county assessor is required to calculate the certified tax rate. And so that certified tax rate is delivered to us very late in our budget process, unfortunately. The timing could certainly be better to give us earlier data, but they're operating on the prior fifth prior calendar year property values. And so as this, as you see this blue line increasing over time, there is a resultant, at least a partial reduction in the property tax rate. Because as values have increased, there's really two components. There's the inflationary value of of property values. And again, as we talked last week, twenty seven percent, if that's the statewide average of the increase in property values and that applies to Provo, it would drive the rate down twenty seven percent. But we also have the new growth component, which we do get to capture. So the the lines are not are not really precise, but the county does set the certified tax rate that we can that we can charge without going through a truth and taxation process. So in the budget document, you will set or in the budget ordinance, you'll set the certified tax rate for next year. And if you accept the county's rate, then that's the one you set. If you want to set a higher rate, then you set it in the budget ordinance and then that triggers the truth and taxation hearing in August. Does that make sense?
So certified tax rate is a percentage?
It's a certified tax rate is a percentage of total value. Correct. Here, let me go to the next screen and you can see the relationship between the two. So the red line is the property tax values. Blue line is the general fund mill rate and the green line is the total mill rate for Provo General Fund Obligation Bonds and Library. You can see, especially in the general fund, because it doesn't spike, you can see how that gap widens. So when property values increase, our mill rate goes down. Property values decrease, our mill rates go up. They're trying to keep us flat. Let's say there was, we get five million dollars for property tax and there's no new growth. We will get five million dollars next year and the year after that and the year after that. That is the how it's designed. Problem is that five million dollars over time is not worth the same as the first year. So this is what it's showing. You can see you can see the value of the property has gone up and our mill rates, especially in the general general operating funds has gone down.
So in a year, in a series of years like we've had, though, where the property values are. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what's considered normal or reasonable. The I mean, I know what I know what twenty seven percent looks like when you're trying to buy a home is not reasonable and not normal. But what's the sort of collective wisdom on responding to those kinds of increases as opposed to maybe an increase that's five to ten percent every year?
That's that's what we're going to have the discussion about. How do we? So in this time series from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty two, home about the the value of property that the county says that we have has increased one hundred and fifty two percent. So in that ten year period, our property values have gone up one hundred and fifty two percent and our mill rate has decreased thirty four percent. And inflation has taken a twenty nine percent bite out of our dollar. So that in lies our problems.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting thing, right? This way, our property owners are protected from getting a huge tax burden when you get these huge increases in your property value that isn't real money unless you sell your house. But the fact that we're not able to keep up with inflation means that nobody's paying enough to to really support the services because those are going up. But because of the system, if we want to do that inflation coverage, we have to do the truth and taxation. But if we ask for that inflation increase, it's it's far less than if it just went on, you know, with the same rate and your property value increasing.
And their property bills actually do decreasing because our mill rate's decreasing.
One of the one of the problems, though, is that even though inflation increases, my wage didn't go up the same amount as inflation. So you're, you know, that your your place. So I guess what I'm saying is you'd have to really figure out, okay, what is the middle ground there? But I was asked to read Brian Jones's comment in the chat on the into the record. He he stated, but as Wayne and John are saying, it's not a discretionary calculation. They are mandated by law to calculate it so that the dollars it brings in stay the same except for net new growth.
So we took we took the model and we projected that. Unfortunately, the revenue forecasting model that this one's using is not. I don't like it. I would rather build my own, but I was running out of time. So you can see, taking off twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, property values are still going to go up and our mill rate is still going to collapse. So nothing is going to change for us in in the near future unless there's a market correction in the in the housing market.
Well, except that doesn't account for new growth, right?
No, that does. This this model does. But like I said, I don't like this model. It's not a really good model. This is more just to show you. We will still keep diverging into the future. Like I said, I would have rather built a different model. I just didn't have time. So I was using a forecast.
So the the properties that we're going to be building in our building in the West Side, for example, would be presumably bringing in new tax revenue, but that would be the only new source of revenue.
But as they come in, our mill rate keeps dropping. So the taxes that we're actually bringing in are lower. Because if the mill rate drops another ten percent when the house gets built, that tax rate would be ten percent lower than it would be today. So it'd be still providing.
Something tells me that's not sustainable.
Going through the slides to show you.
We get pretty excited about new developments, but it's.
So we forecasted out, this is a forecast starting off with the flat twenty one. This is why I don't like the model because it gives me a weird starting points.
Hey, John, can you can you pause for a second? We've got Counselor Fillmore who has a question. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just really a question for Wayne, if he if he would. Wayne, what what is your view today as to the need for an annual automatic cost of escalator? You know, CPI index or something so that we don't fall too far behind in. You know, CPI index or something so that we don't fall too far behind in terms of being able to fund municipal services?
Well, let, let me just, speaking to the need, obviously that's a decision for the elected officials because uh, we've, we've brought you a balanced budget without one, but, uh, thinking about sort of structural sustainability over time. Exactly. It, it probably makes sense to do that. Um, what we've seen as time has passed, cities take either one of two approaches. Either they take a small inflationary adjustment every year, every two years. Or they wait 10 years and then they do a massive property tax increase. At some point though, you do have to address that structural inequity. So we watched, for example, we looked several years ago at, uh, cities that have taken this incremental approach and Salt Lake City is one. Uh, there are several others who just, you know, they either hold the rate constant. So that they get the full advantage of, you know, of the, of the property value increase. Or they make a small adjustment sort of associated with the CPI. We also looked at a city like West Valley a number of years ago that just says, boy, it's so painful to go through truth and taxation. You only, you only get to it about once every four to six years. And when you do, then it's a 20% increase or a 12% increase or something a lot more significant. Politically painful for sure, maybe less politically painful than doing a small increase every year. But, but again, those are two different philosophies about trying to sort of manage it and uh, obviously starting a small increase, uh, when again, sales tax is rising pretty significantly. Because of the economic boom that we've been experiencing the last few years, that's probably a pretty good time to start that sort of thing. But again, I just want to reiterate, the administration didn't feel a need to do it this year. But we certainly understand the desire to create a more sustainable long-term model.
Thank you.
So what these lines show, and again, this is a, I still don't like this formula how it's forecasting. But the green line, top line is if we had adjusted, uh, for Consumer Price Index, um, it stays flatter. We don't actually lose income. That's why when I was looking at this, I realized that that forecaster wasn't working right. The blue line is, um, what we're forecasting out that we'll have coming, coming forward. And then the light blue line in there is if we did something between what we're doing now or doing CPI. And that's what we'd see. There's a, there's a big difference between all three lines. So that's what we need to, um, to worry about. The blue line is what we would, if we stay on the thing we're doing right now. This is what we budget. This is how we're going to meet. And in 2026, we're going to have a problem when the property tax revenue and our forecasted budget are going to intercede to each other. So coming down the road, we, there is a problem coming up for us, but we'll have to be corrected at some point. I don't know how correct this model is. Like I said, I don't care for this forecaster, but it's the one I had at the time. So this is what it'd be, our budgets would be if we had adjusted every year for CPI. The blue line is what our actuals are, up to 20. The orange line is if we had adjusted for, um, Consumer Price Index. Unfortunately, that doesn't show the numbers on it, but it's about a million, million dollars difference between the two. One million ninety four thousand two hundred and thirty three dollars in 2020, in year 20, uh, as well, the difference between the two. And that would definitely make up for their budget imbalance and the loss of our buying power because we've held it flat for so long.
Have we, I mean, I know we just met with the school board and, and didn't really get around to talking about this, um, with them, but I'm curious to know what the school board's deliberations have been about this and about their budget and I mean, they, they haven't been making a direct appeal to us as far as I'm aware.
At that meeting, they are going to go for a tax increase because they have to pay for tip due. So they are looking at a pretty hefty increase in their mill rate.
In theirs, okay.
They also reminded us that we have a gentleman's agreement that they go one year, we go the next. My idea of that is, well, next year is a election cycle, which makes it politically difficult for the council to pass it. There'd be some more hesitant because of the cycle we're in. And the other thing is that the gentleman agreement, that council no longer exists. This is a whole new council, so that agreement was made. And I'm sorry for the school district, what they need to do, but we also need to look at our, looking forward for us, what is on the horizon, um, as far as a possibility of recession. And the research shows that cities that lean into fees and property taxes fare much better than cities that don't, that rely solely on sales tax. And my last chart will show you where we are in that relationship. And when we do the fee.
Fair better in what sense?
Economically, they have, they can get through a recession much better. They have fewer cuts in reduction workforce. They can maintain, there's a level of service. Because the research shows that property tax will actually go up during a recession. People pay their property taxes. They can stop stopping, they'll stop shopping at stores, they'll stop spending money on non necessities. So sales tax takes, is the first thing to crash. It takes a nosedive. Property taxes, uh, shows that there's about a three-year lag. So when the recession hits, we'll see that lag in three years. We'll watch the property, property taxes take a dip. Dip smaller than sales tax. And fees are the other one that helps us through.
Uh, we've got a question from Counselor Shipley. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just, just real quick, I, to add to this conversation, I'm supportive of some kind of inflationary adjustment. We've talked about this, I think, over the last few years and every budget season. I, I, I just reiterate that I'm supportive. I think one of the considerations that, you know, that is, is important that we haven't yet brought up this year is the fact that when we started with the wastewater and water, you know, pricing changes, um, those were going to be far more aggressive, you know, the past few years and, and even into this year. Then, um, you know, there, there's not, that's not like a normal inflationary adjustment. That's a significant makeup adjustment that we're doing on those, uh, those fees. And so, uh, one of the considerations I have at least weighed over the last few years is that if we can get past the bulk of that, which we are now after this year, then I think it makes more sense to, to relook at this and relook at it as a, as an ongoing annual adjustment. But again, we needed to get past some of these fees that we were raising at a non, you know, at a, at a far exceeding inflationary adjustment, uh, that's happening on some of our, our utilities for, for, for our constituents right now.
And Mr. Shipley, can I ask you a question then? Um, so are you recommending waiting one year? I mean, are we, because, because the fees would be dropping down?
Yeah, they, they don't drop down, but the increases, if I'm not mistaken, aren't, don't escalate at the same level they've been escalating. We, we're talking about on some of them, you know, increases of seven and nine percent, right? So the, the combined effect to the average constituent is a pretty significant fee increase overall. And they've been, they've been feeling that over the past five, seven years as we've, as we've tried to catch up on that front. I, I just think, yeah, this is probably the last year that we had, I mean, we could look at this, but I think it's important to the conversation. I think this is the last year that we have significant fee increases, uh, on the utility bill. And, uh, once we're past that, I think it makes more sense to look at this as an annual, you know, some kind of annual sustainable increase to offset inflation.
Looks like we've got a comment from John Borget.
Yeah, Councilman Shipley is correct. There was a five-year plan for the wastewater and this is the, this, the last year of that, those increases for wastewater. And then water's just been doing their typical increases. And so, yeah, this would be the last year.
As in like December?
As in like fiscal 23. I think, I believe they recommend nine percent increase. A nine percent increase that's included in the budget this year for wastewater and that's the last of five-year adjustments.
Okay. So this last chart, what it's showing is the red line is our, our general fund. Uh, the yellow line is our sales tax and the blue line is our property tax. This is the portion that goes in the general fund. Uh, as you can see, as the time moves on, uh, there's a divergence between the property tax and, and the sales tax. We're becoming more reliable on sales tax to fund us than property tax. Um, and that is the imbalance that we, we have to address at some point. If we do head into recession, we can expect sales tax to go first. Then discretionary fees like building permits, um, those will be the second thing we see to get, get knocked down. Property tax and utility fees will be the last thing we'll see to go. Like I said, the research shows that property taxes will actually climb through a recession. They have a three-year lag. And if we're still in a recession, if we're in a depression, three years after it started, we have other issues to deal with than the property tax at that point. So, um, on the horizon, we do have an imbalance that we have to correct. How we correct it, it's up to you.
So if you could just reiterate for me, you mentioned that doing it a certain way makes us more recession proof. And what was that doing? Regular incremental?
Keeping our property taxes a higher percentage than they are currently. It's called diversification of, of revenues. And I'll go into that next time we talk about fees because they're, they're tied hand in hand. It's, it's fees and property tax are what seem to get cities through a recession.
Because property taxes are more steady. So even if.
And fees are actually pretty stable. People pay the electric bill to pay their water bills. So that, that stability helps us get through. The third component of that is, um, healthy reserves. You have healthy general fund reserves, it gets you through these hard times. And we can get through, uh, without having to see too much production workforce or reduction in services provided.
John, you want to remind us of how our reserves are looking? Just high level.
So I, they've actually been looking good. Uh, I think we increased last year to about 20, I want to say 28%. We can go all the way up to 35%. Uh, we do anticipate this year, uh, we've, we've had a number of about $2 million in appropriations, but with our sales tax revenue being up well in excess of 2 million, I think we're going to see another increase. I haven't done the calculations yet, but I'm confident that we'll very likely be in the thirties, you know, and maybe approaching 32 or 33%. The state limit is 35. So I would say we are trending good if sales tax continues to hold the last four months, like we've seen the first eight, uh, I think we'll see another, uh, in good increase and our, our reserves will be continuing to improve, which is excellent for right now.
Just, I know this is hard to project, but how long could we kind of maintain our level of service and such and not have significant reductions in workforce with those types of reserves? Like how long of a recession could we, could we navigate through?
You know, it kind of depends, depends on the magnitude. I mean, if our, if we had a 50% drop in sales tax, not very long, but I don't think that's likely. But what we could look at is a little bit, I know, like in our enterprise funds, like ener, energy and wastewater, we, we look at number of days. Okay. And where you don't typically look at that in the general fund, uh, but, uh, I, I could do some work. But as far as just shooting from the hip, it might be difficult for me to tell you, but I will tell you that we're close to the, we're approaching the state limit. And we're, if we get to that limit, we're as fiscally conservative as the state allows us to be.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, if you were to go forward with the truth and taxation, I would not index it to this year's, um, super price index is way too high. Probably try to take an average out of something, look at the four, the 10-year average, try to find something around there. If we want to go forward with something.
So Mr. Parker mentioned, um, sort of the pain of doing incremental increases every year, just because you'd have to go through that process, right? But is there, is there, I mean, I guess what, um, is not clear to me is say we agreed as a council that we, whether it's this year or next year, thought that a three to five-year plan where we did incremental increases that, that adjusted for the cost of living that we've been dealing with and the rise in the property taxes. There's no guarantee though, right? That, that you, you can't actually do that. Um, I mean,
You can't tie the hands of a, a future council now.
Right, right. So you could only, you can only do it that year and you could say your intention is to keep doing it. But any council at any point can say, we're not doing this any longer. So that's a little tricky to me because if there, if you're, if we're worried as a council that we think an adjustment is needed, but the will isn't going to be there to do this incrementally. Um, how do we? That's a political question, I know, but it just seems to me worrisome that we would be in a position where we'd have to say, oh, okay, we're going to do a big lump sum, but that's kind of what got the county in trouble, right? They, they got, uh, they get sued on that or do they get a referendum? I can't remember what they, there's a referendum for their tax increase, which was the first in 25 years or something. And they tried to do a big adjustment, didn't they?
Right. I would always suggest smaller adjustments. Our country is founded on a tax revolt. It is in our blood. We hear taxes and people will go the other way. So, um, unfortunately, but this is how government functions. We need property tax. We need staple tax revenues to make sure we can get through. Question of a recession is not if, it's when. The Fed chair signaled that we're coming in for a soft landing, but the last seven times the feds have tried to come into a soft landing, six of them have resulted in a recession. I don't have much faith that they're going to be able to land this one softly. This is also the same Fed chair who told us that the inflation was transitory. Inflation is not transitory. Um, so I question a little bit of their guidance right now. And it's just looking at this as a policy analyst, uh, looking at the budget going into the future. We do have some issues that we need to correct, be it this year or next. There will become a day of reckoning when we will have to fix it. Right? And just like the sewer, if we put it off to the very end, it's going to be much steeper, much more painful.
Okay. So along those same lines as George is questioning, so just to educate myself on truth and taxation. When you do a truth and taxation, you're not forced to, to do a certain percentage. It is up to your discretion. What you can.
We'd set the mill rate in our, uh, budget, in our, our, um, can't think of it in the ordinance, ordinance, our budget ordinance.
So you're not, okay. So you, you find out what it could be and then you can do it anywhere between that and what it could be.
Anything you want. I mean, politically you'll suicide if you go too high.
Well, it has to be within the truth of the tax, like the numbers of the current date, right?
All we are limited to is by how much tax, how much are the value of the property is that the county tells us what it's worth.
Gotcha.
If you wanted to make a 99% tax, property tax, you could pass it and I guarantee that you will have a, a referendum on it.
We would never do something that crazy.
We're not limited by those bounds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. The one limitation is that in order to start the process, you actually have to publish a notice. And the notice has to, has to state what the highest rate you are considering raising it to is. And then once you actually have the hearings, you can pass it, you can pass it from anything from zero up to what was in the notice.
Additional questions? All right. I did get a request. Uh, Counselor Shipley, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick. I think, I think on an ongoing basis, I think it really is a, a, a public safety consideration. Uh, public safety is the largest expense in our budget. And if we want it to be a sustainable situation where we're not trying to cut back aspects of public safety in the midst of a recession, in the midst of significant downturn in sales tax, I think property tax does become a public safety, you know, sustainability of public safety consideration. And I think it becomes, uh, something that the public, I hope would, would, would all, you know, even if they don't like it, they would at least see the, the rationale or the reasoning for us considering it some kind of cost of living adjustment to continue to, to provide sustainable public safety for our community. And so I think if that's the, the idea behind it, I think if that's the thrust that we're trying to create a sustainable approach to public safety in Provo. because our our property tax element is becoming smaller and smaller and our sales tax element that's very volatile is becoming larger and larger. I think it's, I think it truly is a sustainability issue for public safety in Provost. So I I know we're not, I'm telling you, I don't think we do it this year. I think we do it next year after we get done with the wastewater increase aspect that we've already looked at, but I do think it's important for us to look at this sooner than later and try to come up with a plan and some kind of format for us to look at this each year. And I think past councils have talked about this, but again, in light of what we've done on the on the utility side, I think it's been problematic in the near term.
I I think that's a really good point, Dave, and I really noticed that when we're looking at the appropriations, the different departments wanted. And we had what, like 12 fire ones that we didn't even do any of them? Or was it even more than 12? I don't know, it was a lot. 16, yeah. So that is concerning when we have that many requests from fire and then we had a lot from police that we couldn't fulfill either.
Go ahead.
Well, another thing is we know that police is going to need several more officers than what they requested. And I believe data earlier said we need something like a five year plan for police and fire, probably fire too. And I think that's exactly what we need so that we can look at the numbers carefully and determine if and how much an increase in property taxes would need to be.
Yeah, I was just going to point out this can, I just don't want to kick it any farther down the road than we need to. I would very much like to look at those numbers because I mean, I think in the in the balanced budget proposal that we've got, we have additional needs in the city that I think we need to figure out whether or not they're pressing enough that that would justify an adjustment now or or later. But that, you know, we just made a pretty significant adjustment in salary. That, I guess, is incorporated into this new budget, so it's not affecting it. And I'm assuming we made up that ground with sales tax. Is that where we were able to cover that ground for the salary adjustments? It was.
For the police?
Pretty significant, yeah. Anyway, I just think it's up to us as a council to decide whether or not we want to be more aggressive in meeting some of those needs now. Are there risks associated with waiting one more year? I just hope that next year, if we did decide to wait this year, there's still the political will to do it. Because I don't, I don't want to. I don't want to put ourselves in a position down the road where it's that much harder for a council to make that decision. And it's that much more costly to to keep waiting. I've just seen that happen too many times in this city and it's heartbreaking and I just, I don't want to do it. So I'm, I'm I'm still open to doing it this year. If other counselors want to explore that, I think it would be useful to know what our choices are in terms of what kinds of opportunities might be opened up for the city in terms of the requests that are being made if we did do a small adjustment. And then sort of, you know, look at each other and look at those facts in the, in the, in directly and make our decision rather than just sort of checking our gut and saying, do we like the idea of increasing? No, we don't like the increasing. Do we like the idea of getting lots of angry emails? No, we don't like that idea. So we're, we're just going to go back to that default position of of not addressing needs that the city has. Anyway. Those are just my, my thoughts. I'll stick with my can imagery for future reverence.
Western CPI average for the last, for that time cycle we looked at was 2.36. Like I said, I wouldn't have even touched this year's CPI. It's going to be out there because we were using May, so we still haven't got May CPI, so I can't put this year's into it yet. If I can put that, as soon as I get it, I'll put it in the model and see what it comes out to.
Say that one more time, I'm not sure I was following you.
The average Western Consumer Price Index for that time period from 11 to 21 was averaging 2.36 a year. That's what the inflation has been for that 10 year, that 10 years we looked at. This year's inflation is much higher. We were running a little over eight and a half last month. May is supposed to be higher, so you know, if you guys look at it, I would not suggest you use this year's CPI. I'd fall back to probably the average of the last 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would fully agree with that. I would just be curious to know what something like a 3% change means in terms of actual usable funds.
Uh, do I have that? So in 21, our funds were 15 million, if I use general fund. General operating funds were 5.1 million. So 10% is 10,000, so it's 50,000 per 1%. It's not a lot of money.
It's wide again?
50,000 per 1%. Would be the increase to our property taxes. It does not move much.
So 100, if we were doing 3%, it'd be $150,000 increase in our revenue? Okay.
That's why it's small increment changes over time add up instead of doing one large.
Well, yeah.
I know, it doesn't sound like a money, a lot of money, but in that 10 year time period we looked at, it's 1 million, $1 million by the end of that time.
Well, and I don't say any of this out of insensitivity to people's pocketbooks. At least, I'm sure somebody would accuse me of being insensitive, but I, I, I think this is in the collective interest of the city. I mean, I go back to Mr. Shipley's point, this is, this is about serving our public and serving our public well. And I do think there's a point at which refraining from any kind of changes along these lines is hurtful ultimately to the public interest. And I, you know, I'm a little bit haunted by that graph that shows in 2026, those lines crossing and, you know, where are we going to get the revenue at that point? Anyway, okay, thanks.
I did get a request for a bathroom break, so we'll take, we'll be back here at 5:10. Thanks.
Recording stopped.
The meeting is still live on Zoom, by the way.
So energy is included in that. That's probably the most familiar enterprise fund to us. We have the special revenue funds, I've listed those there. The capital improvement projects, so CIP funds, internal service funds. So this is such as like benefits, stuff like that, and then debt service. So. Oh, wait, can you click back on the screen? Perfect. Okay, so this is an overview of all of the funds. And here I put black boxes around what what are kind of singled out as changes to kind of look at changes from fiscal year 22. So this last year, the one currently in and ending soon. And then the proposed as it is in the tentative budget. So as you can see, just it goes through the enterprise, special revenue, CIP, internal service and debt service. And then there's a brief explanation for why there was a change in each of those. But feel free to ask and we can get, I have more details on that, or we can ask finance who is also here and can help kind of shed some light on those. But now we're going to go through each of those funds and take a look at more of the specifics. First coming is the enterprise fund, that first line. Oh, also next to each of those, each of the enterprise funds, those titles is a page number. So if you want to reference the exact budget, the exact page for it, then you can. So first is the airport, this had the largest increase, obviously, with over 1,000% increase from the original, from fiscal year 22 to the tentative for this year. And that's for the new airport terminal FFA requirements, funding capital projects. The next biggest increase is wastewater, once again, capital projects there. And then we have water and related to that, a rate increase treatment plant, FTE. You'll see throughout all of the explanations for every fund, there is that 5% cost of living increase. And then you'll also see some notes of FTEs reflecting in what Karen had talked about previously this afternoon.
I have a quick question.
Of course, yeah.
So on my little printout, that second column, the actual FY 2020 has a correction and says it's 2019?
Yeah. Okay, yes, let me explain that too. Okay, so um, there was just a typo and FY in in the first draft of the budget book, there is a typo in FY 19 being actual, or F night 20 being actually FY 19. And so this is now correct, the one on the slide is correct. In your book is also correct, it's actually FY 20, not FY 19. I double checked on that. So we just didn't cross that out for you and Catrice when it's written there. So just kind of ignore that. Yeah, I should have explained that, sorry, I didn't make a note of that. But it is correct here, it is correct in the memo and online, all of those public materials, it is correct, so. But it is correct here. It is correct in the memo and online, all of those public materials, it is correct. So. Um, okay, so that is enterprise funds. Anyone have any questions on any of those specific lines, any of those increases? If not, we'll go ahead and go to special rev, special revenue funds. So this, um, these here, the biggest increase here is the Covey Center. And this is that supplemental FTE that was requested by Parks for technical management. And that is a full time there. And then we have the market rate increases in the Colas. There's no significant increases here. Um, there is a decrease in that last, that last fund there, the community and neighborhood services. And that includes, um, the programs under that. If you go to page 97, it will, it has a couple of pages explaining all of those funds. But I'll just briefly list those here. So that includes the CDBG funding, the rental rehab rehabilitation program, home consortium, consortium, special purpose grants. So there are some changes in funding with those. And so altogether it presents that change. So does anyone have any questions on these funds before we go to the next? Okay. Next is CIP, so capital improvement project funds. So here are big changes. Um, and this reflects in all of the construction and big projects that the city has done in this last fiscal year and is finishing up now, including the city center and the airport. Um, and also, you know, treatment plant. There's just a lot of stuff going on. And so that is why you see big increases there. Does anybody have any questions for these? Okay. And then next, internal service funds. So like I said, these are like benefits, insurance, um, computer replacement vehicles. Um, we had a presentation earlier, um, this month, no, last month on fleet management. And that is something that council staff is working on and we'll get back to um, counselors about the status of that. Um, here, computer replacement, that item says it's completely decreasing. That's something that we need to hear feedback on. So if you have a question about that, I will be getting back to you. So don't, don't stress about that right now. Um, but everything else, the explanations are pretty, um, explanatory there. So if anyone has any questions, if not, we'll go to debt service fund.
Malia, I just want to recognize, uh, Councilor Ellsworth has joined us.
Okay.
Remotely.
And then here is the debt service fund summary. Um, again, explanations are pretty simple for these funds as well. And then that is overview for all of the funds. And I also just want to briefly state just kind of an update on the airport. John and Karen both kind of touched on that. We are going to bring an update on airport funding and everything that is involved in that, including, um, the announcements of Allegiant and Breeze and what that means for fuel, passenger charges, square foot leases for, um, the ground leases for those airlines. Um, that will be coming on the May 17th, um, council meeting. So you can look for an update on the airport then. But if you have any questions regarding the airport or anything that we presented today, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us and then we can get things prepared for you for the May 17th meeting next week. Yes.
Um, I did want to see the results of that FAA, what they wanted from us. Okay, yeah, we still need to price the, um, wages for all those apart airport employees. I haven't seen anywhere where it lists their wage.
We, we will add that.
Do you want their total benefit package? What do they cost for wages plus insurance?
What we're budgeting for them, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on these funds? The non-general funds. Funds. Okay. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Malia. That's it. Piece of cake, John. Yep. We'll, we'll say if there's anything the counselors want us to dig into or they need more information, let us know. Um, we're going to have, right now we have a placeholder on the 24th. I'm going to release that, um, today. So we won't have any more meetings after 17th. We'll have a few budget presentations. First meeting in June and the work meeting, um, just to finish up the work. Um, and if you need something, just let us know. We can, we can do it.
Maybe this is an ignorant question since we just had so much information given to us and it's in there. But given our pre, prior conversation about property taxes and so on, I think it would be really helpful for me to have some sort of simplified version of what the budget as it's currently drawn up, um, doesn't give us um, among the list of things that are critical and necessary.
Okay, we can, we can get that to you. We'll, we'll do that one by email. That one's pretty quick.
What that, I mean, because I know it's in there, uh, I just, you know, it'd just be nice to have it really clearly laid out so that I can have a sense of okay, you know, this is, this is what, um, we still need funding for. Um, if we accepted the budget as is, we would be saying no to the following top priorities, for example.
That's what we can, we'll pull them all apart and we'll, we'll have the criticals, we'll, we'll break them up by criticals and keep going down. Um, we'll get all that to you. That's, we already have it in the spreadsheet, so we'll break it down and make it easy for you to read.
That'd be very helpful. Thanks.
Oh, there's the, uh, it is in SharePoint. But we'll email you the link so you can find it.
How good I am at finding documents. So thanks. I appreciate the extra help.
I just wanted to ask a question about this chart because I was looking at it. So anything that's in purple is included in the tentative budget? What does the gray mean? For the two additional full-time parking officers? Because that's not purple or orange.
Uh, I think it just got colored by mistake. It should, it should be clear. It shouldn't have any markers on it.
Okay.
But we can check on it and make sure that that is not something that's, we know it's not in the tentative budget. We'll just have to make sure it's not in the carryovers.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Doesn't look like we have any online from council members. Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, very helpful and useful. And this was our agenda for today. So if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Proving Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent.
Recording stopped.